I should probably warn people before I do that. Welcome to the council at City Hall Chambers, 10 West State Street. Today is March 12, 2018. It's 5:30 PM. Notice to the public, the mayor and city council welcome comment from the public during discussion of any of the agenda items. You're required to step to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and limit the time used to present your remarks, three minutes or less as suggested in order that others may be given an opportunity to speak. All speakers are asked to speak clearly and direct their comments to the mayor and city council and not to any specific council member. It's at the discretion of the mayor and council to respond to specific questions and comments or to have staff respond during the meeting. If you would, those, the meeting is called to order. Those who are able, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Hoop?
Here.
Isom?
Here.
Lamer?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Weirin?
Here.
Cahill?
Here.
Goudy?
Here.
Good, we have an agenda and welcome to, Gaye Isom. The recount was official as of yesterday, as I understand it?
This morning.
Wow, and we've been sworn in, okay?
Yes.
Very good, welcome. Do any of the consellers have any comments before we start?
I just have a quick one. I'd like to say thank you to the story construction guy this morning, and I'm sorry, I don't know his name, but he, we went over there at 1:30 for, to see the police station and fire stations, and he did a really good job showing us. It was a small crowd of two, but he did a very good job.
I was four minutes late and I didn't recognize any of the vehicles, so I just drove right back to the office, darn it, okay?
It was well worth the time.
Okay, good, good to know, thank you. Madam Administrator, I believe you wanted to address the group.
Yes, I just want to say prior to coming here, councilmember Lamer and myself and a few staff members, we're at the focus area number one meeting for the Highway 14 corridor study at the community building. That one is just wrapping up right now, and focus area number two meeting is starting at 6:00 PM, 6:00 to 7:30 at Haley's Deli. And then tomorrow, we will, I think at 1 o'clock is when we have our area number four meeting, which is the far south end of the corridor, Anson Street area. That will be at the MCSD Administration Center. And then from 3:00 to 4:30, we will be at the Orpheum Black Box for the downtown focus area number three specific meeting. And then if you are not interested in any specific area and just want general information and provide general input, the open house is going to be tomorrow night from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Orpheum Black Box. And so we hope that many people will be able to join us. I was pretty impressed with the turnout that we had here earlier this afternoon, so hopefully we'll have a great crowd tonight and through our three meetings tomorrow.
Very good, thank you. Let's go to item number F, and that is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve it?
I move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Would you call the roll, please?
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Thank you. And would you read the items on the consent agenda, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Approve the council meeting minutes for February 26th and March 5. Approve bill list in the amount of $1,263,866.78. Approve Beverly Ward into the Investment Advisory Committee. Received the building permit for February. Approve January financial statements. Resolution approving contract change order number one for the PCC Iowa River Trail Project for General Supplies for Boulder Contracting LLC, an increase of $38,340.
Thank you, and I think... Item G, would you read that, please?
We have Director of the Marshalltown Central Business District, Jenny Etter, providing the quarterly report.
Jenny Etter, MCBD, 16 East Main. Good evening. This is our first report of this year, so I have lots to tell you, so I'll keep it brief, though. The board currently is in the process of doing our strategic planning, and so that will be accomplished, and we will be giving that to you the next time I see you. But in the meantime, we're planning all of our events and our calendar for the year. Our Promotions Committee is busy, busy, busy. We will be having our Treasures Tour this year, and for any of you who have not gone on this, it's something not to miss. It will be October 12th. We will be having the reception in Barb Hagstrand's newly finished Kibbie Building, so you'll get to see that, and then you'll get to see six or seven buildings that you probably haven't seen before. And so be looking for information about that that will be in the paper. It should be exciting.
I think, I've got it down as October 13 on a Saturday.
It is October 13th.
And it is the most fascinating thing I've attended, the two times that we've had it in the past, so anybody that hasn't done it, I promise you, it will be an eye-opener for you. Sorry to interrupt.
That's all right. We have a lot of buildings that, that, some of them have been finished, and some of them have the capability of housing new apartments and lofts, and so we want people to see all of those in the downtown. Our Holiday Stroll this year will be November 17th. We're looking to get the ice skating rink back again this year. It was a big hit. Bethany, you love that.
Mm-hmm, loved it.
And we had over 400 people that came ice skating, so it was a good time, and it was one of those things that we had no idea when we rented the thing if it was going to work or not, and there is no ice, and so it's kind of like a plastic cutting board, and they put silicone spray on it, so it makes it real slick.
Well, and they had one of them during the Olympics, too. I don't know if you watched any of the figure skating, but they had one outside, and a couple of ice skaters showed different techniques, and they could actually glide and, you know, slide on the ice, just like we did out there. It was so cool, I thought, we've done that. We did it at Marshalltown. It was great.
At Marshalltown. So we look forward to that and having everybody participate in that. We will also do our Adopt a Vet Christmas Party, that will be December 16th. Our Design Committee is busy with revving up for the flower basket program. The flower baskets will go up around June 4th and come down October 9th. We're always looking for volunteers. Right now, we have about 20, but we always need more because they have to water every day from, from the minute they go up to the week they come down, so it's a lot of effort. And our pedestrian walkway, we hope to continue that and complete Phase Two of getting that with more plants, and we're looking at a mural. We'll start finding people who do that and getting costs for that, and see if we can get that completed this year. Our Business Improvement Committee, we will be updating our building inventory, and one of the things that we've, we're trying to do in that building inventory is, is take account of how many apartments and lofts are in the downtown. That's not always easy. Some people really don't want to tell us if they have an apartment or loft, but I know the Fire Department, we've talked to them, and that would really help them out as well, to know exactly who's in the upper stories in all of these buildings. So we'll finish that this year, and we'll have all kinds of collaborations on our downtown rehab projects. The Kibbie Building, as I said, will be completed this summer, and we have two other buildings that, one of Dean Elder's buildings will have its facade improved this year as well. So lots of, lots of activities, and people have come to me, a couple people with interest in getting the incentive grant to improve their buildings, so once those are applied for, you know, we review those, and then we bring those to you for approval. So you'll know as soon as we get all of that information together. Our Organization Committee, we will be having, going to our Main Street Awards, April 13th. We are being recognized this year for hitting our benchmark of $50 million in building renovations since 2002, and so that's really a nice recognition that the state will be giving us. This year, our Volunteers of the Year are Erin McGregor and her husband, John Payne, and they have been loyal and dedicated volunteers for many years with the Holiday Stroll and the Adopt a Vet Program. Anything you ask them to do, and they're right there, willing to provide time and resources to anything that we, we ask them to do, and so we're really happy to honor them this year with that, that award. We have lots of collaborations going on this year, as usual. The Marshall County Arts and Culture Alliance will be moving the Art Festival to the downtown, which we're really, really excited about. I think it will be even better than it's always been, and so we look forward to that. Vision Marshalltown, we're collaborating with them, and our portion of that interest is in the housing group. So we work, we're working with them to help ferret out what we need and what we should be doing with that. We always work with Regional Partnership. Val and I are working on Restaurant Week that will be in, let's see, that will be sometime in September. And Main Street, Iowa, every year has Restaurant Week that they observe, and so we try to highlight all of the restaurants in the downtown, especially ours are unique because of all of the diversity. So with that, that's pretty much the work that the committees are doing. I've also given you an overview, a summary of our financials for the year of 2017, and as soon as this quarter's over, I'll be giving you a quarterly update, every quarter of our financials. And I know I just gave those to you tonight, so if you have any questions or concerns, please either give me a call or email me, and I will give you whatever information you need. So what else can I tell you about what we're doing?
Any questions? Having been on that board for a number of years now, I just have to tell the public what a good job you do.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Onto item H, motions. Madam Secretary, would you read the first motion?
We have two new tobacco licenses. Golden Karen LLC, 134 East State Street, and BW Gas and Convenience, 1701 Iowa Avenue East, pending completion of the property transfer.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'm for approval.
Second, Your Honor.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Martin?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
No.
Okay, led carried, on to item number two, please.
And we have individuals here, we have Daipao from Golden Karen LLC, and is Louisa here? No. Motion to approve new liquor licenses, Golden Karen LLC, 134 East State Street, Class C Beer Carryout, Midnight Ballroom for the Rodeo at Fairgrounds, March 31st, with premise changed for Central Iowa Fair, and BW Gas and Convenience, DBA Yes Way, pending completion of sale at 1701 Iowa Avenue East. Would you like to have these as one or individually?
Oh, I think we should have them as one unless any of you object to that. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Led carried, on to item I, Resolutions. Would you read the first resolution, please?
Resolution approving amended Engineering Services Agreement Number One for the High Street Drainage Improvements Project for Bolton and Mink, an increase of $123,250.
Good evening, Justin Nichol, Public Works Director. I believe it was the meeting before last, we had a report from Bolton and Mink on their findings for the drainage problems and potential solutions on High Street in the vicinity of our new police and fire facility. Since that time, Greg from Bolton and Mink went back to the office and worked up a scope and fee for me for the design of improvements. This would include the design improvements to the levee outlet system, to the detention pond, to the drainage system underneath High Street, and then including the design of drainage improvements from High Street to South Street, as we learned about in his report. Greg is here, and I'm sure he'd be happy to answer any questions, and I'd offer that I'll answer any questions first.
What's completion?
We would shoot for a fall letting, so the design would take, you know, through the spring and the summer into the fall.
So this won't be done before the police and fires done?
I would say it's likely that it would not. I'm not sure that it hap, that the flooding issue was so frequent that it's overly concerning to me. Obviously, there's a chance we could have a rain event, and it could impact our ability to send first responders out, but I don't foresee a way where this is done before the building is open.
Okay, then, in a, in a like situation, when are we going to see the contract on the street?
On the street? Oh, for the traffic improvement?
Yeah, we have to redo the Center Street and the Sixth Street connections.
Yes, that would be still a ways down the road. We, I say we, I finally issued an RFP for Traffic Engineers this last week, been a little shorthanded and fell down the list of things to do. That is still to come, yes, very good point.
That'll be at this fall, though?
Uh, yeah, likely, you might see a contract before fall, considering it's the first meeting in March.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved, Your Honor.
A second. Any discussion?
Well, so this is for design, but can you run through a little bit more in detail about the improvements and what the total cost of the improvements will be? Because we were looking at three different plans, I think?
Mm-hmm. We're estimating that the improvements would cost more than a million dollars. The improvements would include the outlet pipe through the levee system. I believe Greg said they were going to lower the, the point from where the detention pond outlets into the stream, make improvements so that the water running from High Street to the levee system pretty much is streamlined, make upsize and make improvements to the pipe underneath High Street, and then upsize and make improvements to the pipe as it runs from High Street to South Street. Correct?
All the way to Engle.
Oh, all the way to Engle. I was shortchanging us.
We're going all the way? I thought we were just doing the first section.
We had talked last time about designing the first two sections.
That's right. That's planned.
That's not in the plans?
No.
We can certainly revise the, the agreement, but we have, we have stormwater bond funds that are necessary to get spent. I know that's been a point of contention on whether we should use police and fire bond funds or stormwater bond funds, but I would make the argument, some, at some point, we would come and need to make these stormwater improvements, whether we were building the new police and fire station or not. So the, yes, I'll be up forward, upfront that this design fee is for the design from the levee to Engle Do Street.
Okay.
And the, the street further south, was that Meadow Lane or?
Yes, from Engle Do, I think the next intersection, well, Olive comes in there, but yeah, you, eventually with all the pieces, we would work our way south to Meadow Lane.
Any other questions by the consellers? Madam Secretary, did you receive any comments from the public?
No, Your Honor.
Is the, is there any comment from the public at the meeting here? Let's call the roll.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Carried, would you read item, or resolution number two?
Resolution approving the amended Engineering Services Agreement for the Marshalltown Manhole and Pipe Repair Project for Fox Engineering Associates, an increase of $399,100.
Again, Justin Nichol, Public Works Director. This is an amended Engineering Services Agreement from Fox to add services to what they are already providing. Bear with me while I pull up the document. But the services include consultation with homeowners that we would need to acquire easements from, the actual action of easement acquisition, survey to document those easements, construction administration, so the time for an engineer to be administering the project, construction observation, an inspector to be on the project on a daily basis to watch construction, preparing record drawings when we're done so that we have an accurate record of what was constructed, and the need for construction staking on those easements when they go out to acquire them and when we are, when the contractor is working. I realize that this project might be somewhat new to the consellers. Steve Sapier is here from Fox Engineering, and he did prepare a little, a little PowerPoint to go through with you quickly on what the scope of the 2017 manhole and point repair project, and I'd let Steve go ahead.
I'm Steve Sapier from Fox Engineering in Ames, and just wanted to provide you a little bit of information on the background of the project first. This is the 2017 manhole and point repair project. It was started back in 2012, 2011, 2012, when the city came to an agreement with Iowa DNR for a consent agreement on several projects in regard to their collection system and the sanitary sewer system in general. This was one of the projects that was targeted as part of that. As you've been progressing through those consent order projects over the last 10 years or so, the, we've done many manhole rehab projects, a couple of manhole rehab projects, a couple of pipelining projects, but what we've, as we've gone through those projects, we've found many locations where we just can't get in and repair the pipes that we need to. So this, these projects have kind of been, these locations have been, kind of been kicked to the side down the road, so we can do them later at a later time. So they are included in the consent order, but we had to push them back because of, we weren't able to get access because of a number of different factors. So this really includes 100 manholes, a little over 100 manholes, and what we're going to be doing is installing manholes at locations where currently you just have a lamp hole or a tee in the sanitary sewer pipe, or a bend or an end of pipe, so that the maintenance folks and your, and your staff can't get in there and actually do the maintenance that they need to do. What we found is we've gone through some of the televising videos, is some of those pipes upstream, maybe downstream of those locations, need some repairs, and for us to be able to get in and complete those repairs, we have to be able to put in a manhole to get access to those locations. So this, this project will take care of those items that we weren't able to complete as part of past projects. These are really needed to be able to get in and maintain those lines, complete the cleaning of the, of the sanitary sewers, complete the televising, complete the pipe, pipelining where it's needed to, to ensure you have a, a sanitary sewer system that's going to last into the future. Along with that, there are some point repairs that have been found as part of the, the review of televising videos and so on that have occurred over the years. So there's over 50 point repairs that are going to be replaced as part of this project, or plan to be replaced as part of this project. Some of those pipes are broken, some are damaged, and there's, what we're really trying to do is prevent any potential backups that would occur down the road if, if a pipe were to collapse or were to fail completely. So that, that's another aspect of this project. Originally, this project was going to be split up into three projects. It was going to be two manhole projects and then one point repair project. Because of the SRF funding that's available through the sponsored project program, we decided to go ahead and put all these together so that we could get about $250,000 in SRF-sponsored project funding to apply towards a water quality project on a city project sometime in the future. So that's just a little background on the project, just to give you a little idea what, what some of these locations that we're going to be putting manholes look like. A lot of them are manholes, I think, or lamp holes, over 56 of these locations are actually lamp hole locations, and they used to put in lamp holes many, many years ago instead of manholes, maybe possibly to save costs. Back then, the requirements were a little bit less, or they weren't quite as, as, as constraint, or as, the requirements weren't quite as high as they are now as far as getting access and being able to maintain the system. So they put in lamp holes, which is basically a tee and a pipe that comes up to the ground surface, but you can't really get any kind of equipment or necessary maintenance items that you need to do to end of the pipe for access at those locations. So those will be coming out, and a manhole will be going in their place. This is also occurring at locations of tees, bends, and ends of pipes. So instead of the tees and bends and manholes and lamp holes, we'll be putting in these manholes, you've seen these all over town, these will allow your maintenance people to get in and continue to maintain these, these pipes at these locations in the future. So as I talked about, we kind of, these kind of came about through other projects over the years, so they're kind of scattered all over town. As we found these through televising and through other means throughout the system, we've documented those, and so this project's going to go through and get all those at the same time, for the most part. The red dots are all the locations where we're actually going to be putting a manhole in. As you can see, we're kind of scattered all over town, not all over town, but mostly in the northwest quadrant of town, north of Lynn, Lynn Creek, and west of Lynn Creek as well, as where most of the locations are. If you see right there in the center of the screen, you'll see the milestone A, that's kind of a shaded area. So we've coordinated that area of construction with some of the other things that you have going on town with your parades and other public activities that are going on, and so we're going to have constraints in the contractor, restrict the contractor from doing work in those areas while this project's going on. This project is anticipated to last about 12 months because of all the locations that we have, all the different locations scattered around town, so we want to make sure that that contractor is not going to be impeding any of the activities that the city has planned through the next year. These are just more locations, these, can't get them all on one sheet, so I'm just going to go ahead and throw them up there for the other locations that we have, and then these are more south of Lynn, Lynn Creek. There's a few locations that are south, not very many, but there's a few, so. So this is a typical location, what it would look like. Most of these locations are in the intersections, not all of them, but most of them, so they will be coming in, taking out the lamp hole, which may be in the middle of the street, putting in a manhole at that location, so you could have some interruption of traffic from all four locations as this is going on. These projects, depending on the contractor, can take a couple of days or up to a week. Again, just depends on the contractor and their level of ability to get, get the work There are, the pipe, point repairs are going to be very similar to this, and those will have maybe 10-foot sections of pipe that we'll be replacing in some cases, but in some cases, we're actually replacing an entire block of pipe sections that need to be replaced because they're in bad shape and need to be replaced, so. So some of the impacts, obviously traffic, we're going to be all over town at different locations, mostly throughout, starting likely sometime in July, extending all the way to the next year in 2019. So it will be a continuing project, the contractor may have more than one crew going at one time, so there'll be lots of different locations going on at once. Obviously, the contractor's going to have to have good traffic control in place, will have to have good communication with the city to try to make sure that that impact is reduced as much as possible. Some of the services that could be impacted include water services, sanitary service services, some of the franchise utilities will be impacted, some of those will have to move some of their utilities out of the way, but obviously, we'll be coordinating some of that with the contractor and with the landowners, so we'll have to have, the city will likely have to have someone out there to coordinate with the property owners, let them know when services might be affected, coordinate with the contractor so that all this can go as smoothly as possible. The schedule, again, taking bids, is on May 29th, is the anticipated date. The schedule, again, taking bids in May 29th is the anticipated date, up to 12 months for construction. So some of the potential issues, obviously, some of these lamp hole locations are, some of them are buried, so we can't actually get access to the pipe from the ground surface. So we're having to use elevations upstream and downstream to kind of get an idea of where these are and what elevations they might be at. Sometimes that's not always the case, the pipe doesn't always follow a straight line, especially if it's been in there for a long time, because some of the old constructing, construction methods weren't quite as up to speed and up to par as they are today. So some of those impacts could change elevations and so on, so there might need to be some adjustments in the field to make sure we can adjust those projects or those manhole locations and elevations as we go. Again, traffic would be impacted, and schedule, I mean, if we're talking over 100 manholes, if you have a contractor that can do one a week, obviously, you can see they're going to need at least a crew or two, maybe even three, to get all this work done within that 12 months. So you'll have somebody, whoever's out there watching these contractors, running from crew to crew periodically, or stopping in quite frequently to make sure things are being completed as it's indicated in the contract documents. The total anticipated cost is about $3 million. That's the construction cost to date, based on all the different locations. A lot of that, obviously, is pavement removal and replacement in order to get these in place. But also, there's a lot of, a large number of manholes to install, so those costs do add up. The, again, schedule is anticipated, receive bids in May, and by next July or so, the project should be completed. Is there any questions?
Thanks for the explanation. Oh, go ahead.
No, I think, I'm glad you covered the project cost, it was the, it's new information, so I need some time to digest it personally, and understand if there are more pressing needs, or, and this is really a Mr. Nichol question, but that's a big project, we just talked about a $1 million-plus-dollar project, and I'm not sure that it isn't better to go with the bigger project, that other, you know, that other stretch going down to Meadow Lane. I know we approved the one design, but...
So you're getting those confused, that storm sewer?
No, I know, they're totally different, I know, I know. But this one, you know, maybe it needs to be stretched out over a longer time period, or I just, it's the first I've really gotten into it, I mean, through the doc, you know, through the letter and all that, but, the quote, but it's a big project.
It is a big project, yes. And as Mr. Sapier explained, we can certainly explore options, but we've really kind of taken the low-hanging fruit, and now we're to these more difficult locations where we have an option to stretch it out over time, but per our consent order, we don't have an option not to do this.
I think the consent order schedule currently is that this would be completed by December of 2019.
And we've been...
So what are they, what are they going to do to us? If it doesn't get done? They're not going to do anything. We've done, we've met all their requirements up until now.
Yeah, the city has done a great job of...
And if we, if we back this off for six months, they're not going to do a cotton-picking thing to us, except we're getting pushed into the corner. This is the big project, I noticed on some of your lines, there's many blocks of new line going in, and I don't know why we can't separate that stuff out and make several projects out of this thing, because I don't think we have $3 million in the bank to pay for it, number one. Number two, if we have to, if we have to go to the bond market, I think we need to talk about that, because we're already getting a lot of backlash on our sewer rates, and if we have to go to the bond market, if we're going to be raising rates, we need to be talking about that before we approve all this.
And to build on that point, so we have talked about this, as you'll know, we applied for the sponsored project dollars of about $250,000, which requires us to borrow from the state revolving fund for this project. And so that has been the path that we've been proceeding down since we discussed that probably, and I would hate to even put a timeframe on it, but we have discussed this, and so it would be the state revolving fund that we would be going to, very different than going out to the bond market where you have to get a bond rating. Specifically, what the state revolving fund is going to be looking for is are your rates adequately set to provide for the capital improvements that you're looking to make? And I think that we can sit here and know that we've had a study that went into effect, those rate changes have happened, that those are financial criteria for the state revolving fund that we should be able to meet. So...
I don't think we, we didn't have this project in there, as I recall, when we reviewed those rates.
It might, it might not have been in there when we reviewed the rates, but it's one of, this is one of those things that we've, we've started the process with the state revolving fund for this, and we did get the sponsored project dollars, which you designated to then start looking at a downtown parking lot, specifically the one at First Street and Church Street, to apply those water quality sponsored project dollars to. So we might not have had like a conversation where all of this was very clear that this was the project that was driving the need to borrow from the state revolving fund, which was driving the application for the sponsored project dollars, but we have had this conversation in bits and pieces over the last year.
And I would add, yes, it was included in the rate, as Mr. Sapier indicated, it was in three separate projects back in, three years ago when we were talking about rates. In the, in the hope of capturing the sponsored projects, we put the three projects back together, that way we'd have a larger bill total to capture more sponsored project fund, which is essentially a zero-interest loan, correct?
Yeah, the way the sponsored project dollars work is that they basically do an interest rebate of this $250,000 that we get back as sort of a grant, and so it will ultimately then adjust the loan amount to a lower interest rate, but at a higher principal by the time the grant dollars, the sponsored project dollars are in there. And so this is, this was something, the city has not used the state revolving fund recently, because there were other reasons to go out to the bond market and borrow money through general obligation bonds. And so this is the, the first time that I think in at least 10 years, probably more than that, that the state revolving fund has been used. But the other thing to remember about calendar year 2018 is we're not, we're not going out to the bond market for, for anything else that we were planning not to borrow for streets or anything else, we were using bond funds on hand, and basically, we left our large borrowing with the police and fire project for that purpose.
So I think we've all been through the consent order stuff enough to know that as long as we're making progress, there's, it's really not a big deal how slowly we move, as long as we're moving.
That's correct.
So what are the pros and cons if we spread this out? How does the funding, how is the funding impacted, or, you know, if we were...
We, I would assume then we'd have to talk to the Iowa Finance Authority and the DNR about whether or not we could keep our sponsored project as is right now. I would say then if we're reducing the amount that we're borrowing in an initial, whether it be through the state revolving fund or otherwise, we can't keep that grant the way it's been awarded currently, but I don't know if they would reduce it to the amount that we were borrowing, or if they would just say we'd be ineligible for this borrowing at all. And the idea was, very much to probably Steve Chagrin, when I, when I brought up, why are we not going to the state revolving fund? There are these dollars out there for water quality. It was, as he was describing, or as Justin described, that there was an order, a change to the consent decree to break this apart, but that to make it worthwhile for actually bringing in some of these water quality dollars that we really needed to put things back together again to drive up a higher amount, because it's 10% of essentially your project cost. And so if you were only going to borrow like 800, 800,000 or a million, then you're only talking about bringing in 80,000 to 100,000 in these sponsored project dollars, which really doesn't get you very far in terms of a green infrastructure water quality project.
I can keep asking questions unless somebody else has a question. Okay, so can you walk me through the, the funding just one more time? So that 250,000, you said it's an interest rebate. So just tell me again, I heard you say, you know, the principal, you end up paying more principal at the end, is this, is, what's the net effect to us? Is it like no interest and we get a rebate, or it's just all kind of is a wash?
It's more, the rebate is probably the better way to describe it. The, so we would be borrowing a principal amount of money, and then when that project was complete, they would adjust our loan to add on this 250,000, but it would not change our payment schedule or anything. They basically lower the interest rate to reduce the calculations of what would be interest over time to reflect that there would be $250,000 that we would not be paying in interest, that we actually get basically interest paid, interest rebated back to us upfront to use towards a water quality project.
But we still have to pay it back?
It's, well, it would be paid in interest, so you're still going to pay interest on the loan, it's just going to be less interest by that. And Steve, I don't know if you want to offer any better...
Yeah, essentially, it's the interest that you would have paid on the wastewater, for the wastewater project. They've reduced that interest rate, so then now you're not having to pay that $250,000 in interest, you get that back to use towards a water quality project.
Okay, one more question. So if we adjust our dates for the project, not the, not the total cost, but the dates, I mean, the cost would probably go up, but if we dragged the project out two years or a year and a half, would that, do you think that would still, we'd still have to go back to the IFA and we'd still have to go back to the NR?
Currently, the consent order for this project, I believe it wasn't scheduled originally to be done in 2016, so we've already been pushing these projects back. We've been in discussions with the Iowa DNR Field Office Five, environmental, Tom Atkinson. We've also been in contact with their attorney to push these, these dates back even further. So I think we've already actually pushed this back at least once, this would be the second official time, and we actually, we're in, just in the process of doing that currently. So if we were to push this back further, the, there's a, there's a good chance you could still get the SRF-sponsored project funds, but it's only going to be for the project that you put forward currently for this, this year, essentially.
And are they sticklers for sticking to the schedule? Like if we just kind of did the work more slowly over time, is that...
When you say "they," you mean like the sponsored project in the IFA, sure. There is some flexibility, I believe, in the schedule. To do that, we've actually been trying to coordinate this, this project a little bit with, with some other possible funding in the future to make sure that they align. So we're always, obviously, looking to do that, but for me to be able to answer that question, I'd have to actually go to them and just say, okay, here's what we're looking at doing, is this going to be okay? Because I, I just don't know for sure.
The, the one thing that I can speak to is I know that you can't finalize your loan until you have had, basically, your all retainages paid and can provide proof to the state revolving fund, Iowa Finance Authority, that those payments have been made and you've closed out your project. So that then, how that ties in with the sponsored project and adjusting your interest rate, there's probably some, something there to at least explore, but we wouldn't be able to sort of finalize the sponsored project until the loan was closed out and the project was closed out.
So what's our, what's our interest rate? What are they, what are they publishing the interest rate right now? Where are we at?
I honestly don't know that at this moment.
It was very, I know it was competitive at the time that you considered doing it, but I don't know what it is right now.
So if we don't borrow the money till now, we pay the new interest rate, right?
I don't, as far as when you'd start paying interest on this project, I believe after that loan is amended at the completion of the project is when you start paying the principal on that loan.
I understand, but what, the state is really good at having an interest rate, and then there's a substantive interest rate if you go so many, so many months over now. We've, I've dealt with them doing a couple of those, and so I'd like to, if we're going to use the fund, that's fine, but I want a, I want a black and white number saying this is what we're going to pay, and if we don't have a black and white number, we're not going to prove anything. So we're not going to, we're not, I'm not in favor of sitting here saying we're going to go ahead and do this if we don't have black and white numbers in front of us saying what we're going to end up paying. And we should have that, we need those.
Yeah, and that's, the SRF process isn't one that we've actually started yet. I do know that basically they, because it's not, you get all the money at once, you basically have to do draws as you would approve payment requests for different things, so it's not like your typical loan. And then, like I said, you can't close it out until you've made that final payment request. So the final schedule of payments, they give you a draft schedule sort of upfront where depending, if you, if you drag it out longer, you're going to be making interest-only payments on what they're, what they would be projecting that you would be borrowing, and then you don't get your final debt service schedule until you actually do close out the loan.
Yes.
So there's, there's some of that where they're just estimating what it is based on how quickly we intend to get something done as well.
Okay. Question. Haven't heard it said yet, are the sewer rates going to increase because of this project?
No, the, I made the statement earlier, Councilor Hoop, that this, there were three projects that now comprise this one project, were included in our last sewer rate update. Now, I should go ahead and mention that the three years are almost up and we'll be back. I don't know what our situation is right now. If I had to guess, we're sitting pretty good because we haven't done nearly as many projects. My hope is that sewer rates would remain the same, maybe elevate slightly, but that's, that's pure speculation at this point. We haven't delved into any of the numbers yet to tell you what it's going to be like in the future. But this was anticipated in the last sewer rate increase.
Just if we had a couple more weeks, could we get answers to these questions?
And we're not pushing back the timeline in a bad way?
Yeah, I'd say we might be delaying things two to four weeks, which I don't think is the end of the world. I was going to mention, we do have a meeting with the, the state, yes, about the sponsored project next week, so I'm guessing, yes, we could have some answers for you in two weeks. I think it still would be an estimated interest rate if you're looking for the exact, but we could have some, we could have some better information for you in two weeks.
Yep, so I moved to table, Your Honor.
Second.
To the next, to the next council meeting on the 24th.
26th.
26th, sorry.
The second by Gowdy.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any discussion about that motion to table? Let's call the roll on the motion to table.
To table this item to bring back to the March 26th meeting. I'm going to put you on speakerphone.
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lemar?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
We've got sufficient votes, so I'll declare that that motion did carry, it is tabled. Would you, Madam Clerk, read item number three under resolutions?
Resolution approving purchase contract with American Ramp Company of Joppa, Missouri for the purchase of skate park, skate park equipment in the amount of $70,074.49.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Don't move, Your Honor.
Second.
Thank you. And for discussion, Anne?
The 2018-2028 Parks and Recreation Master Plan identified that our youth and teens were one of the most underrepresented groups in Marshalltown in terms of having recreational opportunities available to them. Two goals identified from the new strategic plan include increasing the amount of recreational opportunities for underserved community members, and identifying and prioritizing activities geared towards teen and other represented youth. The survey distributed to more than 400 students showed that they would like a pump track, graffiti wall, and additional skate park elements. A pump track is an excellent cardiovascular workout for all ages. In speaking with former Parks and Rec Director Terry Gray, phase two of the skate park was to be paid for out of CIP grants and a small fundraiser, the same strategy we are using. The city of Marshalltown was very fortunate to recently have been awarded the Marshalltown Community Fund... Community Foundation's first $20,000 major impact grant for this project. The city's CIP budget recently passed contained $55,000 for the skate park. The Marshalltown Skate Park Committee will hold a small fundraiser to raise the remaining, the remaining approximately $1,500. The Bricklayers Association will be building the graffiti wall for us as part of a student project. This updated venue will continue to draw people to the South Sixth Street Recreation Complex area, including Mega Ten Park, the Children's Discovery Garden, the Marshalltown Family Aquatic Center, and the Lynn Creek Trail, providing enhanced multifaceted recreational opportunities for families of all ages and abilities. Staff recommends moving forward with purchasing skate park equipment to complete this next phase of the project.
Did we receive any written or called in comments, Madam Clerk?
No, Your Honor.
Your Honor?
Yes.
May I have a?
Mr. Lamer?
I have a one question. Is this, is this equipment in extra equipment other than what we've already got there? Or does it replace some of the stuff we've already got?
It's some, it's like new ramps.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yes.
But it's all new? Are we going to leave what's already there?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, so it's in addition too?
Yes, this is to make a more challenging course. The kids are bored with what they have. We needed some new elements.
Okay. Thank you.
I asked a question a while back. How much, uh, has the skateboard committee funds raised by them?
Um, they have a fundraiser every year and last summer they paid to have two new lights. So we have outdoor lighting there now. So that was their contribution last year. I think that was about 3,500 last year. And I don't know that before that, what the record is.
I think it was in the 2,500 to $5,000 range usually.
So tell, tell us about the pump track. Where will that go?
It's going to go on the west side of where the, um, current skate park is. So between the parking lot and then there's going, there's like a trail area there. It'll go right next to the skate park on the west side. It's 21 feet wide and 55 feet long. So 125 feet around. It's about three feet off the ground and it's, goes like this so that the kids pump. And so you don't have to pedal so much. So it's a really good workout for anybody doing it. It's pretty exciting.
What's it made out of? What's the material?
Um, let me see here. I believe it's weatherproof, um, wood surfacing. It's, oh, marine grade lumber framework composite riding surface. And we're going to set it on gravel pad.
Try your bike out.
Yeah. Sounds great.
Any, uh, any comment from the public? Let's call the roll.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill? Gowdy?
Yes.
It, uh, is declared to have passed. Thank you, Anne. Let's go on to item number four, resolution.
Resolution approving an application as an opportunity zone.
Uh, first, is there a motion to approve that?
I move for approval.
Any second?
I'll second it just so we can hear it.
Uh, and probably Jessica might jump in on this one as well, but, um, uh, the state of Iowa, the Iowa Economic Development Authority, uh, has introduced a new, uh, program called the Opportunity Zone. Uh, this is actually a federal, uh, program, um, where capital investment that's available funds to businesses or individuals are able to take those, Jessica, help me out the, uh...
Um, it's, it's basically annually, uh, there's 2.2 billion dollars of unrealized gains from individuals and corporations with their investments. And it's able to take those unrealized gains and invest them into opportunity funds, which results in a reduction of federal tax liability.
So the, so those funds that, say, business takes and realizes that can then be, uh, used in communities that are designated with an opportunity zone. So within Iowa, there are 247 census tracts that are deemed eligible to be classified as an opportunity zone. Uh, within Marshalltown, we have three census tracts, uh, that qualify. So that includes the area, um, basically along our Highway 14 corridor that we've been talking about includes the downtown, some of our industrial areas. Uh, so from a little bit south of Anson, up north, uh, in kind of the heart of our downtown area and, uh, northwest or northeast, sorry, neighborhoods. So, um, we do have these eligible, um, census tracts. The process that we are going through at this point is to submit an application for those, uh, tracts to be considered by the state, uh, as eligible. So the governor's office will be the one to determine which, which tracts are eligible. I believe there's approximately 60 that, of those 247 that will be, uh, approved. Uh, and then be able to take advantage of these opportunity zone, uh, programs, uh, as they unfold. So since it is a new program, there's still a lot of uncertainty. It's federal, uh, and so they're waiting on a lot of federal guidance as to what would be available, how it would be available, what kind of eligibility guidelines for specific projects. So there's a lot of uncertainties on, on what it might mean for us. But I think it's an, it's a tool for us that we can use for development. Uh, so similar to tax credits, new market tax credits, or housing tax credits, or historic tax credits, there's a lot of different programs out there that can become available to a business or, uh, for development using, uh, funds, uh, through this kind of means. So I, I compare it somewhat in that nature. It's not anything that, at this point in time, you know, the council's having to match, is having to, uh, budget. Uh, it's simply an application, uh, for us to hopefully be, have an opportunity, uh, to serve, um, these types of projects in these areas. And so there's a lot of focus on the application about what is our vision? What is our plan? So that's why we felt that timing wise, with the work that we're doing with the Highway 14 corridor, uh, that there is a very good tie to, uh, what this could present for us. Because one of the criteria, or some of the criteria that they're looking at, uh, in reviewing applications is community vision, economic hardships, past successes, uh, unemployment rates, and our computer, our community's plan if awarded a zone. So, uh, we feel like we have a really, uh, good, uh, we're really well positioned, I think, for this, um, because of the work that we're doing with the Highway 14 study right now. Uh, we're looking at ways for redevelopment. We're looking at ways to improve our district, uh, that does have some of these challenges. So, um, the applications are due, uh, Monday next week, uh, to the state. Uh, and then I believe the governor has till mid, late April to make a decision and recommendation from there. And then we'll hopefully hear from that, that this would be an opportunity for us for future projects. And I believe the designation is for a 10-year period, uh, that it would last. And so it might be something that we have come up, you know, three, four, or five years from now, uh, as new business development that wants to be able to take advantage. And this would be a way for us to leverage some resources.
Any questions? Ms. Martin?
Yeah, I, I think the opportunity is there to make an application. As always, when you deal with a state or especially a federal government, there are requirements, shall we say, administrative, though they may be. Do you have any idea what those might be as far as reporting, meeting certain criteria, getting out of our comfort zone? Anything there? What's the downside?
Uh, you know, at this, at this, and as you mentioned, of course, and we're very familiar with many state and federal programs, um, there often is administrative, uh, expectations there. Um, really with things being so new to this, uh, you know, even in the frequently asked questions that the state puts out, they themselves say, we really don't know a lot right now. There's still a lot of rulemaking administrative guidance that needs to be, um, finalized, uh, to know how it would work. So I would suspect that if we are designated, that each project would have to be evaluated on its merit and what requirements might be a part of it before we would move forward with something. Uh, some of you may recall, we used to have an enterprise zone, um, which was something, I think, very similar in my mind where it was a, a state-run program where business, uh, could enter into an agreement with the state directly, but we had to approve it. Uh, and then they were able to utilize benefits, um, through that enterprise zone status on their project. Um, and really our role was very minimal in those cases. We had a commission that would review a project and, and that was about it. So, um, you know, it, it may be somewhere along that line. It might be something that's more, uh, administrative and I would think that we would have the opportunity to evaluate those at that time.
I would agree with you that we have those, uh, building blocks in place now and they're updated, they're current and so on. So it seemed to me that there's an advantage, uh, certainly in moving ahead with the application and then, uh, hopefully the chance of success for this might be, uh, rather fine.
Michelle, your grant writing got us millions of dollars of improvements to lead house, uh, lead invested homes here, making it safer for kids. If, if you're in favor of this type of application, I don't see the downside personally.
I think, I think it does just provide us with, exactly as it's called, an opportunity. Um, you know, should we decide it's not the right thing in the future for us for any given project? You know, that's, that may be the case. But I hate to limit ourselves, especially when we're looking at areas that we can redevelop and how to fund things. We know how tight budgets are and if there's other resources that can be leveraged, I think there's always worth taking that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's call the roll.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Thank you. That is carried. Item number five, please. Or resolution number five.
Resolution approving an agreement with Bolton and Mink for the development of a wayfinding master plan.
This is an item that, uh, it will look familiar, but it is different from what was before you back, um, at our last council meeting. Uh, that was presented as a change order to our existing agreement with Bolton and Mink for the Highway 14 study. Um, what you have before you is a standalone agreement with Bolton and Mink, um, for a development of a wayfinding master plan. Um, ultimately, uh, the use of Bolton and Mink is one that brings together some synergies of work that they have done, um, with the Parks and Rec Master Plan or are currently doing, um, with the, uh, Highway 14, um, corridor study. And there's actually, I would say, savings that we see on this agreement by being able to combine, um, one of our, you know, final meetings, final public meetings for the Highway 14 study, uh, with, um, the, the, sort of the kickoff of the wayfinding master plan. And I think, uh, what I should talk about is a little bit more of the history here with this project. It was actually back in October, um, when working with the CVB envisioned Marshalltown, uh, we put together a steering committee to look at, um, what we should even be thinking about in terms of, of wayfinding. And in that conversation, uh, you know, we, we talked about how do we move forward? The city was the best entity to move forward, but this would not be our plan to own. This is a community-wide plan and that's why we have such a diversified, um, group of individuals on that steering committee. Um, back in November, uh, you approved a resolution for the city to apply for $20,000 from the Martha Ellen Ty Foundation, um, with a $20,000 match from our local option sales tax, um, designated fund balance. Um, that grant was ultimately approved and so we had a budget of $40,000 and, uh, agreement from Bolton and Mink has come in under budget by, um, just a little over $2,000 there. And so what's before you tonight is a resolution to approve that agreement and to give us the ability to, um, start implementing our wayfinding master plan, um, study and, uh, move forward with this item.
I move for approve, approval, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Martin. Any discussion?
I'd like to go on record as saying, I, I like what they're doing, but I just don't like the way that we're paying for it.
I think this is a great way to pay for it personally. Cause it's not, we're not trying to, we're not trying to, um, this is out of local option sales tax funds. They're one-time funds, really. I see them as and I don't think we should fund as we did back off of the general fund on purpose. We're not going to be funding things long-term out of local option sales tax. So it makes sense to me. It's a one-time deal.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to address some of our longstanding, uh, guidelines, if you will. We pride ourselves on doing a public-private partnership in projects that benefit the community. Uh, I'm well aware of the Martha Ellen Ty Foundation, working with the city for community betterment, a lot of collaboration, uh, planning together and so on. This project does fit, uh, community betterment. It is appropriate for local option sales tax because it, it affects the total community. Um, it's a step forward and, uh, certainly I'm in support of it.
Thank you. Any other comments? And I should have asked the clerk if we got any written or phoned in comments.
No, Your Honor.
Uh, time for a public comment.
Hi, Val Ruff, uh, 2906 Nelson Road. I'm here on behalf of the Marshalltown Convention and Visitors Bureau. And when I took this position, I know that there'd been, um, some work that had already been done on the wayfinding with the previous director, um, I think the Central Business District. I think this has been kind of an ongoing project that we just haven't wrapped our arms around quite yet. I just want to say that, um, working with an independent consultant like that, that you already have a, established or built a relationship with, they know our community, uh, the parking rec, they're working with them on the Highway 14 corridor. I just think that you've already kind of established that and so why bring in somebody from a different firm when you've already been working with them? I mean, they know Iowa, they've worked, um, I went on their website a little bit today and you might want to check it out, but they've done work in Perry. Um, they've also done some work with Iowa Falls with some infrastructure and some cityscaping. Um, they are an Iowa-based firm now and based out of Humboldt. Um, I'm not here just tuning the, them, but I'm just saying it's kind of an initiative that's already undergoing. And for us as a tourism entity, it's really important that when we have 800 swimmers coming to the swimming meter, we've got, um, 1,000 tumblers coming in, that, that these tourists and guests in our community, it's easy for them to maneuver around and get to these locations and these facilities. So it's really, has a lot to do with their experience here. And so as hard as we're all working to really push out community pride with the Vision Marshalltown and everything that we're all working to do, this is just one more thing that we can do as a community as a whole. So like Jessica said, we're all kind of working together, um, Central Business District, Vision Marshalltown, uh, the, um, Convention and Visitors Bureau, uh, we've got the Central Iowa Fair and anybody that really wants to tout their facility, the, um, I see that Dr. Shute is here to represent, you know, the schools involved. So I would just say, and I understand your concern about the expense, but I think that Jessica's worked really hard to kind of whittle that down because we've already built that relationship with them. So we're not paying as we would be to bring in an individual firm, but we're working with a firm that's already here and knows who we are. So the wayfinding is a very important part of the, the continual work that we do for community pride and also to make sure that our guests have a really good positive experience here. Because if you've been in a community, I mean, the first place that comes to mind, and I wouldn't, I know we're not Chicago, but that is like the worst place ever to try to drive. But if you go to some of these smaller communities and they have wayfinding, it just makes a really nice experience and you leave there going, wow, there, you know, that was really nice. And I, I don't know what it is about signage, but if you're, you're visual, I think it really matters to the experience that you have. Um, something I just wanted to share that I think was, um, kind of comical and we all know Kyle Martin, and so I'm just going to wrap it up with, um, Kyle Martin was in Des Moines for the, the state wrestling and he was reporting and, and announcing. And he went down to the, the big, uh, bridge there, the big suspended walking bridge by Wells Fargo and he was talking about this huge wayfinding sign that, um, showcases all their bike, their trail system for their bicycling and recreation. And he was really impressed that Marshalltown, Iowa is on their wayfinding signage in Des Moines. You know, highlighting Marshalltown's biking and recreational. So there's a lot to that and I just hope we would take a minute to maybe really understand the importance of wayfinding in our community because it's something I think that would make a big difference. And so I know that as a Convention and Visitors Bureau, we promote this. And so, I know that as a Convention and Visitors Bureau, we promote this, and we would probably help fund, pick up a little bit of the funding as to the best of our ability.
Thank you, Val.
Kylie Lazier, Executive Director for Vision Marshall Town, sixteen East Main Street. And I also have a number of board members who are here in support of this project, too, if they want to kind of raise their hand. So, as one of the tri-chairs for this project, I just wanted to give a little background on how we came across wayfinding as a goal. So, based on research by the Knight Foundation, we identified four areas that residents or potential residents say affect their happiness in a community, and so those four areas are openness, aesthetics, social offerings, and education. And so, aesthetics in this case is physical beauty or wayfinding signage. So, from this research, then, we developed those four areas and said that that's what we were going to focus on because community pride is really hard to measure, and it's a feeling, and it's how you act about your community. So, we picked those four, and our vision for community pride is to have and convey a culture of respect with a reputation as a great community to live, work, and play in. So, that's kind of how we came upon aesthetics, and then from there, we had research from Bolton and Mink from the Highway fourteen project, and then also from the parking rec master plan, where community members said that they expressed the need for improved signage and understand the value of an updated family of signage and how that might affect your community. So, our own citizen feedbacks saying that there is a need for this. As a steering committee, we also identified a number of other communities who have done similar projects. And so, wayfinding, just to kind of explain it a little bit further, so like Val said, it has a big pull on tourism and visitors, but for those community members who are already familiar with a community, you can increase awareness of amenities, so you can do landmark signage, so we don't, we're not just talking about directional signage, we're talking about landmarks and increasing the awareness of what amenities and offerings we have in the community. And so, that's called place-making, and so you'll hear those two terms together. So, within the scope of this project, we identified a few different areas. So, these were large-scale monument signs at the community entrances, so looking at how we can make some of those community entrances better, and then connect those themes with the directional signage, so how you get somewhere, and then, like I said, those landmark amenity-type signs. And so, figuring out how all this works together across the community, how this ties into, like, the Thirteenth Street District that already has an image, the Main Street uses the historical district signage, and so using this third-party vendor to fit all that together, so it's a cohesive cross-community signage and monuments. So, we're looking at this project for not only creating awareness for visitors, but also creating more awareness for residents, and then also as a sense of community pride.
Any other questions or discussion or public comment? Let's call the roll.
Lamer?
No.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
That is carried. Since it has carried, I feel at liberty to comment, we've got the nicest Y, we've got the nicest surgical center, we've got the nicest gym in the state, and it's just as nice to point these places out to people when they come to town. And it was fun to see the parking lots chock-full at the Y Swimming, State Swimming Meet last weekend. Thank you. Let's go on to the next item, which is ordinances.
Third reading of ordinance to amend the ordinance fourteen nine six-two regulating consumer fireworks and display fireworks as described in section seven-two-seven dot two of the Code of Iowa.
Is there motion to approve this?
Move for approval.
Second. Any discussion? Any public comment, or any comment received by the clerk, rather?
No, Your Honor.
Seeing no one stand for public comment, let's call the roll on this one.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Carried. Thank you. On to item K, which is discussion, and the first item under that is cash management and policy provisions, revisions.
Good evening. Diana Steiner, Finance Director. So, we are working on getting our software set up so citizens can pay online, and one stumbling block was the cash management policy that said we couldn't, could not charge a surcharge to the customers. So, I have updated the policy, so now we can do that. And going through the policy, I have also updated some other items. For example, originally, when we were in the budget cycle, I said that the cash management policy said that the cash reserve would be fifteen percent, and that's the way it is in the cash management policy currently, but our ordinance actually says it's twenty percent, so I updated the policy for that. Another area is that the current policy showed the general banking account as just for deposits only. Since we went to our new software, we have changed that so both deposits and withdrawals come out of our general account. And I've also updated the area of investments, so my designee can also perform duties of investing. This follows the investment policy. And then, just for internal control purposes, we've also updated items that better mirror what we're actually doing. For example, the departments now enter their own accounts payable invoices. It's passed along electronically, the directors approve it, it comes to finance, we review, and then pay it for processing. So, there's just little things like that that we've changed, so I've updated those. Any questions?
Is there just a standard percentage for the credit card fees?
Yes.
What you settle on?
Okay. So, for the credit card processor, it's two-point-nine-five percent with a minimum of two dollars, and then our software company charges a dollar twenty-five. So, if you have a fifty-dollar bill, you'd be paying fifty-three dollars and twenty-five And that will be on the website, that you're going to incur that fee if you continue.
Can people pay parking tickets online?
Very shortly. We're working on the parking module.
Okay.
Should be up and running maybe this summer or fall.
Cool. That impacts me directly sometimes, so.
Confession is good for the soul.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I have one question. Since you now are going to do both income and expenses out of the general account, do you have a separate fund for the payroll account?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
The net payroll comes out of our payroll account still.
Very good. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Just a comment here. I realize this provides an option for payment. There are provisions, I understand, and I want to emphasize them, that the payer understands what he or she is entitled to on a fifty-dollar bill or whatever, so that, I think you made that clear in there, and I think the improvements you've suggested here merit our future approval here, so thank you.
So, at the next meeting, I'll actually be bringing you the contract for the credit card processor, so you can review that.
I have one more question.
Val?
Since we changed, you changed in the manual now from fifteen to twenty percent. We're not going to try to meet that requirement this year, are we?
I would say that if we're going to have a budgetary conversation related to backfill, we would at least present to you what that would look like, so that you will know what that looks like and where we are and how much more would be needed. But that would totally be up to the council as to whether or not you wanted to actually make that funding move.
Okay, because we, in this budget, we did that to make it equal, to get it to fifteen percent, so we'd have to make another contribution to it. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Diana. Item number two under discussion is the agreement for use of space with the Marshall County Communications Commission.
Yes, this was something back on January sixteenth after all entities had approved the 2080 agreement to create the Marshall County Communications Commission. It came into existence. Obviously, that was previously the Marshall County nine-one-one, which is located in the basement at twenty-two North Center. And so, the commission felt that it was necessary to get a lease in place, which is also very good risk management practice for us. And so, the lease before you has been drafted by the city attorney along with input from our insurance company about what requirements we would have. It's very simple, one-dollar consideration, but also then requiring a certificate of insurance be provided, and the city be named as an additional insured on that certificate of insurance. The easiest way to get this forward, so that we just have some agreement that protects us both, was to just break this down into twenty-two North Center, leaving the conversation for the new building to happen at a later date, when we know more about when the new building might be occupiable and what move-in plans look like.
So, there's been, there's been no agreement with the new building yet?
Correct.
And no conversation?
No conversation. My feeling is that that's a conversation that should initiate with the council, so it would be something that's certainly on our radar to start working on here over the next few months.
Okay.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay. Do you need any further direction, or just?
Nope, just to clarify, this would then come back to you on the March twenty-sixth meeting as a resolution to approve. We would also distribute it to the Communications Commission to include on their agenda for the twenty-seventh, and Mayor Greer would be able to update the commission as to the status of that at their meeting on the twenty-seventh.
Okay, thank you. I think that takes us to item L, public comment. Is there anyone in the public who would like to comment?
My name is Carlene Prezak. I live at one-eleven Harmony Drive, and the Center Street Viaduct, those things that are raised, you know, those drainage things or whatever they are, I don't think that that's very good for a person's tires running. I mean, some of them are stick-clear-up, and I was wondering what the problem was with those, you know, is that a weak spot in the viaduct, or?
You're talking about the joints, right?
Yeah.
That we drive over.
Like the metal things that sticks, you know, they stick up above the pavement.
The expansion joints?
Yeah.
They're the expansion joints, where they go together.
I had a staff person today say that they saw a sign saying that Center Street Viaduct is going to be closed.
Okay.
Yep. The Lynn Creek Bridge on Center Street.
Again?
Okay.
Do the other end of it. Yep.
Your Honor, we can have the engineering department speak with you about your concerns with that and to kind of let you know how those work and...
It's just one of the, it's just one, you know, one line that, where those metal grades stick up above the concrete.
Thank you. Any other comment?
Very quickly, as the city administrator mentioned, yes, we did place a changeable message board so we can get notice out to the public in every way we can. Next Monday, we anticipate closing the Center Street Bridge over Lynn Creek to make repairs to the south abutment. The council and public may remember that we made repairs to the north abutment last October and November. I used my engineering judgment to not open up and start repairs on the south abutment as we were going into the month of December. We anticipate it should be closed for two weeks. It could be closed longer than that, depending on the weather and what the severity of the pieces of bridge structure that we find when we get into the bridge. Can I answer any questions?
You said this is starting Monday?
Yes, Monday, March nineteenth, after the morning rush hour.
Seeing no one else approaching the microphone, let's declare the meeting is closed at six fifty-five PM. Thanks for coming.
Okay, what kind of flowers do you like?